So we're going to go ahead and get started. Our first item on the agenda is the work session number 79, compensation study. So I'm going to call us to order. There's nothing to motion or vote on, so we're going to go straight to staff's presentation. And am I tossing the mic to Ms. Quinn?
Sure, either me or Chase. We are going to kind of tag team this presentation this morning. We have Heather with us from Segal Consulting. You guys have all met Heather. She's going to kind of go through some of the survey findings and results. And then we're going to turn it over to Chase at that time, Dr. Ramey, to kind of go over some options, examples, on how teacher salary progression could happen. And then he's going to turn it back to me, and I'll kind of go over where we are with 17 compensation, to kind of look for some guidance from the school board, and where we're headed with the 2017 budget.
And the objective is, coming out of today, is that there will be some kind of consensus around where we're headed. So we are looking for consensus at the end of the day. Dr. Garza?
Yes, and today's, I think Dr. Ramey will emphasize this yet again, today, I think you can be way away from these today, I think they're very powerful, is to really get, you know, we've done all the market analysis. And so I've heard folks say, well, y'all haven't completed your compensation study. Well, yeah, we really have. All the market analysis has been done. Now it's, how do we want to design the future of our compensation structure? How do we want our models to look? What changes do we want to make? And this will probably take us a couple of years to get exactly where we want it. So today, we're going to be asking your guidance around our scales itself, our teacher scales. And today, we're focusing only on teacher scales, and giving us some guidance about what you want that design to look like. And then we'll begin to start modeling that, and then get your consensus. We'll continue to work on it more from an iterative perspective. But today, to get some guidance about what you all want that to look like, you know, what the ideal is.
Thanks. Can you all, it's working. So to start with, short agenda, a status update, share with you where we are and where we're headed in the timeline. And then a summary of findings, that is, a summary of the employee survey findings that just concluded, as well as a recap of the market study. And then, as Dr. Garza said, a discussion on teacher pay progression. We have some concepts and some approaches to share with you, and I'm hoping you'll have some thoughts and ideas about moving forward with potentially some of those. Go next. Status update, as you can see in our timeline here, the employee survey was open through February, and that recently closed. This is the compensation survey. There's also an engagement survey that also recently closed. But we're just going to talk about the compensation opinion survey today. Focus groups are, will conclude in March. We've had one day so far of focus groups with teachers and school administrators, and we have three more days this week, where we're meeting with employees throughout the entire system. And then March and April, developing the compensation philosophy, which really starts today. Developing pay models and approaches, April through May. And then in June, our goal is to have some recommended new pay models for, not just for teachers, but for all employees and all job groups. So today, we'll begin that discussion on compensation strategy for teachers. And then in the upcoming next work session, talking about target market position, some options and ideas for differentiated pay, and also system-wide salary scale composition. So a bit about the employee survey, I am very pleased to say we had an excellent response rate. Fifty-eight percent of the teachers, and those paid on the teacher pay scale, answered the survey. Similar percentage of instructional assistants also answered. Eighty-three percent of your school administrators answered the survey, which is just wonderful, showing a real strong commitment to this subject and an interest in this. In the unified scale, we had a 38% response rate, a little bit lower than the others, but still, we have a great deal of confidence that the survey results are representative of the entire workforce. And then a very short recap of the market study. We found that the teacher pay scales are very close to the market average at the beginning, those early steps, not competitive for mid-career teachers. And then more competitive, but still below market at the end of the career. When total compensation costs are taken into account, compensation is somewhat closer to the market average, but still lagging, especially in those mid-career steps and years. We found that teachers reach the maximum rate sooner in many of the other school districts that we surveyed. Here, it's 29, after 29 years of teaching, or I should say, it's step 29. I recognize the steps do not always equate to years anymore. And the step increase percentages are higher in many of the other school districts. Part of what caused that lag in the mid-career is the percent of each step increase is smaller here, particularly in those early years, compared with some of the other school districts. And that's part of what Dr. Ramey will share with you, is how that teacher pay progression is different in some of the other schools. And that is what's driven our, the concepts and different approaches that we're going to share with you. So some of the findings of the employee survey. We found that many teachers are interested in more rapid career earnings. Again, this is consistent with what we found in some of the other school systems, in some of the other school districts. Sixty-three percent said they're very interested in reaching the top step sooner. And there's always, there's always a trade-off with everything. I know this sounds like, you know, who would say no to that? But the trade-off, the trade-off is that after a certain number of steps, that that pay, that there are no more steps after those years. So pay does not continue to increase. So this is something we're exploring in the focus groups, in terms of that there are trade-offs with these sorts of options. We asked employees to tell us their top three priorities for some of the compensation ideas that were presented in the survey. And 59% of teachers said rapid, more rapid career earnings is in their top three. It was the highest percentage of any of the other, any of the concepts that we presented to them. The second concept to talk about, second idea, is differentiated pay. Eighty-three percent of those who answered the survey are in favor of differentiating pay based on school environment. That is particularly recognizing those that work in high-need schools. Seventy-nine percent are in favor of differentiating pay based on critical needs and critical fields. Other items of high interest are additional pay for selected roles and responsibilities, particularly leadership roles within the school. Right now, there is some pay opportunity for department chairs, but there's certainly other leadership roles within a school, that teachers are supportive of the idea of financially recognizing that additional work in those roles. Also, additional pay for advanced degrees in the content area. That is based on what a teacher teaches, having a master's degree, for example, or a second master's degree in that particular field. And also, there was a high level of interest in a professional development or career ladder pay. The approach, the idea of recognizing growing proficiency in professional development throughout a teacher's career. So with that, I think we're ready to move into some of the concepts and the ideas about teacher pay progression. And that is what, I know I just talked about the differentiated pay, which will be a subject for a later time, but today, we're just talking about the pay scale itself, and the steps starting at the step one, and then moving on.
Great, thank you, Heather. Good morning. It's nice to be with everybody today. And as Dr. Garza said, we'd want to spend some time this morning, looking at the division's current teacher pay progression model, and then also provide several examples of possibilities for the board to consider. Just as we get started, for comparison purposes, we've used the master's lane of our salary schedule. So all today's slides will be compared using the master's lane, both for us, the market, and for our competitors. Here we see FCPS's current pay progression for teachers, marked against the market survey average. As we discussed during the February work session, the FCPS schedule, as Heather alluded to, is close to market at the beginning salary level, and again, at the max career salary. However, we see a significant lag in the middle. That lag at the 15-year mark between the market and FCPS is nearly $9,000, to give you an idea of how far behind we're lagging. Also, for today, it's important to know that we're looking purely at teacher salary. We know that the numbers shift a little bit when we look at total compensation. And when we come back in April, we will have a presentation on retirement benefits, and have a conversation regarding total compensation. But for today's purposes, we're going to look just straight at teacher salary that provides for better apples-to-apples comparisons with the information that we have related to the market, as well as for the comparative districts. But it is important to note that when we look in April, when we do look at total compensation, as Heather said, FCPS will be closer to market average, but there will still be a lag behind the market when we look at total career earnings, even when looking at career or total comp. But that is for April. And so today, we continue to look just at the salaries. And when we look at the FCPS teacher pay progression against two competitor districts, we also see that we're lagging behind others in the area. These examples, however, also show that there's different models and approaches that we can use, which would allow for teachers to progress more quickly toward the top of the teacher pay scale. And as Heather said, one thing we've heard loud and clear from our teachers, that moving up quickly is important to them. And so we thought these were good examples that show that. When we look at competitor one, competitor district number one, it provides larger increases for teachers earlier in their careers, and then slows the rate of the increase during the later stages of the salary schedule. While competitor two has a salary progression model that closely resembles FCPS's. However, the percentage increases are larger, and so it makes their movement quicker and earlier in the, in the, in the teacher's, teacher's career. Also, you can see that these models, while the market line is not up there, but knowing where ours is compared to those, those are a bit more closer to market than our current, than our current progression is. So as we look at the division moving forward, the board has several options. The first is that we can do nothing, or keep the pay progression model at the status quo, and make no changes, which will result in FCPS continue to have that same progression model with that same lag in the model, lag in the middle. The second option would be to maintain the same shape of our curve, so not necessarily change the shape, but simply increase all steps equally. This would result in the salary schedule looking more like competitor district number two that we just discussed. Or the third option would be decide, for the division to decide to go a different direction, change the slope, which could also add to the competitiveness of the division versus the market. And if we go that way, we know there's several options that the board could consider and give us guidance on. And other than using a blank slate, we want to at least provide some examples of some models that were out there, that the board could use for discussion purposes. And so we provided three, for the conversation that the board's going to have. And really, what we're looking for today, as Dr. Garza said, is guidance on the board's philosophy in teacher pay progression. And so I think it's important to note that we've not provided the cost, the costing information for these implementations. I know that in some ways can add to the difficulty of the conversation, and we'll be able to bring that information back later. But really, right now, what we, what we're really trying to garner is the board's feelings on what that philosophy should look like. And then as we get that guidance, and really try to determine what the shape of the curve's going to look like, then we can go back, and we can call on Kristin and her team to join the conversation, actually, they're very much already in the conversation, and help us put some dollar figures to those models, and we can bring that conversation, bring that information back to you. But again, today, we're just taking that philosophical approach. And it is important to note, though, that all three approaches contain starting and ending salaries that are very comparable to FCPS's current salary and ending salaries. So while we're not looking at the costing, we did try to stay consistent with that approach. So looking at these three examples, we can see that all three significantly decrease the amount of time that it will take teachers to reach the max step on the teacher pay scale. The quickest ascent is achieved through Model B, as pay increases are consistent at 4.5%, increase at each step, and teachers would reach the max level by step 15. While Concept C reaches the max at 21, and Concept A at step 22. Now, a significant difference between the concepts is noted in those percentage increases at each step. As you see, step, Concepts A and B maintain those consistent percentage increases at every step, while we break from that in Concept C, and that while we see larger increases during the early, early steps on the scale, they become smaller as we get further along in that progression. So going from the narrative to looking at them compared against each other, Concept A closely resembles our current slope. However, it is adjusted to allow teachers to reach the max salary more quickly. We keep the basic shape of our current model, but it flattens out once teachers reach step 22, rather than the stair step we see in our current progression. Concept B clearly provides teachers the quickest path, path to the maximum salary line. However, teachers are then held on that same step for a significant amount of time as a progression flatline. So we see that teachers, that could see 15 years of quick progression, but then 15 years of being nearly flat. It is, yes.
The Concept B, theirs had a real distinct, it was clear that their philosophy had been the higher increases early in career, up to, I think theirs was year 14, and then it flattened out. So that one's more like what Arlington currently has.
And so then, Concept C, and we're going to look at each one of them compared to the competitors, and so you'll be able to see some of those pieces. But Concept C lands between A and B, but it's still a quicker progression than our current approach. Teachers would hit the maximum at step 21, one year before Concept A, but the progression is not as quick as in B, because the percentage increases start to taper off a bit after year 13. And again, go back to more of that kind of stair-step approach that we're used to in our current model. We also see that the, all three concepts make the teacher salary progression much more competitive when compared against the market average. And again, noting that the starting salary is very comparable to our current starting salary, and even with the quicker progressions towards the max level, the actual max salary for teachers is about the same as what we are, what we're currently offering. So as I said, we're going to look at each one of these individually. We see that Concept A, compared against the market average in our current progression, this concept has a consistent 3% increase. It moves us much closer to the market average during the middle part of the teacher career, where we know we have our currently, our biggest lag. And it also provides a schedule that closely reflects the shape that we currently have. When we look at it compared to some of our key competitors, we see that FCPS salaries under this model still lag behind our competitor districts, but we do move closer to the market average. We also see that the shape of the progression is comparatively, not only to FCPS, but also one of the other competitor districts. And we think that's important, and we'll get to this later on, that we want a scale, or we believe we want a scale that is recognizable, so that when, when teachers are looking at coming to Fairfax, they can compare it easily to others around. And so that's why we bring that point up, is it helps us maintain our place in the market. And A, again, will allow teachers to reach the max at step 22, rather than step 29. For Concept B, now we can clearly see the significant difference in the pace of the progression as compared to our current model, as well as the market. By providing the consistent 4.5 increases, teachers would achieve the max level by step 15. But again, this flatlines for the second half of the schedule. And this creates a very strong position for us, it's recruiting and retention, for teachers early in their careers, that they can easily see that coming here would provide them to the ability to quickly move up the scale. And we can look at it as compared to our two competitors. Makes us much more competitive through the first half of the schedule, but as the model becomes stagnant, we would lose ground to our competitors on the back end, as we see they continue to progress, while Model B would, would flatline somewhat. But again, just with Model A, it makes us more competitive against the market average. As we look at Concept C, it does not provide the quick acceleration of B, but it also doesn't keep our teachers at that same level for as, as long of time, as we go back to the percentage increases in that stair tat step towards the end. The big difference here between this model and the other two models is that the percentage increase is not the same. We are at a 5% increase per step through step five, a 4% increase for steps six through 10, 3% increase for steps 11 through 15, and then 3% every other year for steps 16 through 21. But like our other models, you'll see again, the beginning and at the end, even though it's a, it's a very different approach, we start about the same spot, and we end at the same spot, about the same spot in terms of starting and ending salaries. So we'll again compare it to our key competitors. We see that Concept C is rather similar to competitor A, however, not quite as aggressive, but it does place us in a more competitive position with those districts, as well as compared to the market, and we compare it to our current model that we have in place. So we circle back to the main points of the models, and really, some of the key takeaways we have are these, that all three models reach the max salary rate much more quickly than our current model, which was one of our big takeaways from the survey that Heather's folk, Heather's folks did for us. But again, we see a varied, varied pace. We provide for different shapes of the curve, with the Concept A being the closest to what we currently provide, and Concept B providing that steepest grade of curve and the most acceleration, the quickest acceleration for our employees to that max level, while Concept C provides a varied percentage increase at the step level, and is somewhere between Concepts A and B in terms of that progression, progression speed.
So just to reiterate, at some point during this discussion, we'll kind of want your ideas about which of those models is really headed the right direction from a board's perspective? You know, whether it was A, B, or C, or some deviation or derivation of that, that you want us to develop? And then what we can do is, once we get some direction, we'll start to develop and model what that would look like. We can also model the cost, and potentially, a phase-in model, because we know that we might not be able to fund it overnight, it might take a couple of years to do so. So today, we're really talking about what the ideal design would look like.
And that's a great segue, because we want to, we want to start that conversation. And as we looked at trying to see which way we might want to go with one of those models, as Dr. Garza just spoke to, we tried to put at least some draft goals down on paper for the board to discuss, so that we can start seeing if there is a clear path that would take us one direction or the other. And these are some of the principles or goals that we came up with. And really, these are for discussion purposes for, for the board. And the first bullet you see there, really sentence starters, to try to get an idea of where we want to be as a division. And so competitive market position for teachers, starting salary will be, and then to make a decision, at the market, top of the market, first in the region, within 3% of the market average. We wanted to give some examples, those aren't the only ones that we could go with, but some ideas of how we would fill in or finish those sentences out. And then we would do the same for mid-career and ending salary. We'd like mid-career salary to be at market, top of market, within 3%. And then again, at the end salary, at market, top of market, or first in the region. Any of those concepts, really, to help us guide where we want to see those positions to be. Because as you, as you could see, or probably picked up on from the models, how we answer those questions could somewhat help us decide which model we want to go with, because we know, based on the shape, would be responsive to different answers in those three different areas. And then other goals that we think are important to consider, that we're doing a lot of work with our employees, both through the survey and the focus group, that our salary structure or new model reflect our employee input, that no employee's salaries will be decreased from the, from their current level as a result of the new pay models. And that's simply saying that if we shift a model under the new model, just because we went to a new model, folks won't lose any of, any of their pay rates. The new scales will be easily understood by potential recruits and current employees. That goes back to why we made these comparisons with other districts in the area. We want to make sure that, that they can put Fairfax next to their districts, and understand what they're getting by, by joining us here in Fairfax County. And then lastly, and we want to make sure it's sustainable. We're not looking for a one-hit wonder. We're looking for something that we can implement for the long run, and something that can help us guide the work that we do, not only, and then again, the coming years, but for many years to come. With that, I'd pause and turn it back over to you.
I'm thinking maybe it might be best to pause here and have discussions on this portion of the presentation, and then we'll go into the 2017 compensation discussion.
So what I'd like to do is, I have Karen, Illyon, and Janie. If we can, rather than just like say what you, what you're voting for, if you could ask the questions upfront, and then we'll get into a kind of a discussion about kind of where we're leaning in terms of garnering support later. I mean, it's not a hard and fast, but I think it'll just help if we get to the questions part first. So Karen, you're first.
Thank you. And thank you for this presentation. I think it's been very helpful. I'm a little nervous about answering your questions in light of some of the faction, factors that we don't know. For example, I would like to know as far as the size of our, when you look at competitor one and two, what is the size of those competitors? Especially when, you know, if the competitor base is the smallest system by numbers of teachers, but paying the highest, then that is a very different market competition than if it is a market competitor who is, certainly, it's not going to be the same size as FCPS, but within, you know, an, an order of, you know, 10, 20%, then that will change how you address the market. So the question is, you know, in scaling our market position to our two market competitors, where are we on that? You know, I understand one of them is more like Arlington, but Arlington only has, you know, 1/9th of the size population that we have, that they're serving, so that's part of the question. Secondly, when you flatline the compensation levels at different periods of time, the question I have is, what is the impact on retention numbers? And then the third?
Flatten where, just at the end?
If you look at the, at the end, yeah. So if you end, if you flatline starting at year 15 versus year 22, it, what happens to your employee retention? And, you know, do you have examples of that elsewhere? Because obviously, that also is impacted by when an employee is fully vested, because then they can port their, their retirement elsewhere. The third is, you have, if you go back to the beginning of your presentation, questions, or you have support for differentiation based on both, whether it's a high-need school, and also by subject matter expertise, or more challenging environment. And so my question is, how would you address that? Do you see that as being addressed in your steps? Or do you see that as a separate discussion? And just those.
Let me answer the last one. We have a lot more information to share with you, and a lot more detail that we receive from our employees about differentiated compensation. We intentionally put that off to next month, to try to chunk some of this work. So we will talk in more depth about differentiation, and how might we do that? That is typically done with an add-on, because the employee could change jobs within the system, and they no longer qualify for it. So you have to treat it like an add-on, like a stipend, yeah, like something you add on, because they can't always have it if they're, if it changes. You know, they may be a special ed teacher, that they get the additional money, but then they go back to a third-grade gen ed class. back to a third-grade gen ed class, they would lose that extra. But that's, if we could, we'll focus more on that next month, but it's important conversation.
So Karen, is that for you? Okay. Illy Young, Janie, then Jeanette.
Are we not gonna...
Would you like for us to quickly ans... Do you want us to quickly answer those two questions?
Sure.
Okay. I think the first one was, so how does this compare the market analysis? What school systems, and are they smaller? And does that make a difference? I think we'd have to go back to the first presentation we did on teacher and how we compared ourselves with all the surrounding systems. But I would tell you that I'm not sure that in this design work, that it, I'm not sure, unless I'm not understanding your question well, I'm not sure it matters if they're larger school systems or smaller, because they still can take our best teachers. And so that marketplace around us, all of them largely are smaller than we are. So, and they're the people that are, you know, siphoning off.
It's really a risk analysis as to what is the threat of how much can be siphoned off? If it's one-offs, if they can only absorb a certain, you know, a couple of teachers a year, then you, it's horrible, and we don't want to lose them. But, you know, what is the overall cost associated with it versus if it's a comparable system that, you know, we lose 5% of our staff every year to going somewhere else because of competitive salaries? And so those are the things that you balance out, is, you know, what is, what's the best way of addressing it, especially in the near term while we have challenges on budget? You know, what do we need to do immediately, and what do we do longer term?
I think that also speaks to some of the difficulty of the conversation this morning, and that's why we really wanted to try to focus on the philosophy and the approach that we wanted to take, because I understand what you're saying, but also this is a conversation about how we want our scale to look. Not necessarily the percentage of dollars that are going to be infused to bring it up, but to say that we have a approach right now that, you know, kind of looks like a half moon in some ways, and do we want to continue that? Or do we want to change it so it looks like in a different fashion? And so I understand that they're very closely related, but I think that we can also look at it differently because of the fact that if we say we want it to change, that's just an approach of how we take it. And then we have to go back and look at the costing piece of that and see, okay, we've decided we want to change the shape, how many dollars do we have to put into it? And how much more competitive does it make us where we place those dollars?
And then the second question you had is, if you flatten your 15, how will that impact retention? I'm not sure that we can definitively answer the question, except with one thing. Clearly, our employees are saying their preference is to have the slope look like the surrounding school systems do, where we emphasize and have, yes. And that's why the survey information and focus group work is so important, because clearly that's what our employees say matters to them. And so hopefully, if we change our slope, that ultimately it would help us with retention.
So let's hold on to those. I think those are potentially next steps. We'll wait and see what other people have to say. And you see what I'm saying? Illy Young?
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I do have some basic questions regarding survey results first. Going back to the 58% of teachers having responded, would you be able to give us later on some time as to the breakout of those 58% in terms of where they stand on their steps? Because I want to see whether it's a more experienced teachers have responded in a higher rate than less experienced.
I believe that information was requested in the survey, so I'm sure our consultant could probably pull that information. And just so you are also aware, when we put the focus groups together, we ensure that we had teachers throughout the career path.
Sure. The next question about the survey results or findings is that when we see 63% of teachers wanting to have a more rapid career earnings, you know, I can certainly, you know, sympathize, empathize, and agree with that approach at this point. Whether you get different, you've gotten different responses from teachers based upon where they are, you know, more experienced teacher might wanting to have a different approach than this, I would like to see that, if you have that. And on the retention rate, I think I sent in my question to Susan Quinn over the weekend, whether we have a data showing on our retention rate, whether you can tell us on which step showing what percentage, whether we have that kind of data? Because as we, as the board, will be asked to make some sort of decisions, will give guidance on which approaches we generally want to take, if you want to accelerate or compress our pay scale, or accelerate the pay raise, that whether it's going to be, you know, faster rate up to 15 years, or 20 years, or even shorter, 10 years. But then I think, you know, for me as a one-board member, that kind of data will be hard for. Another question that I think I know the answer, the maximum amount of credit we give to the teachers applying to FCPS from outside with experience is 10, correct? Or is it nine? We put them at step 10, is that the maximum?
I'm actually going to ask, Michael Drager is saying it's step 13.
Oh, wow.
And Loudoun County, I believe, is very similar to FCPS, the highest step that we place a teacher coming into the school system.
Okay, I was wrong by, I guess, three steps. There will be a, for me, there will be a useful information to have, as probably, you know, when we draw teachers to FCPS, where we put the maximum, probably want to become more competitive, where we put the maximum to that point than beyond. And also, as far as progression is, rate of progression is concerned, rather than giving, you know, consistent percentage of progression up to a certain point, I would rather want to see a, some sort of progressive rate of progression, meaning C over B, approach-wise. And I understand that all your, you know, comment you made, you know, Dr. Ramey made about, you know, not focusing on the total amount of budget or funding we need to accomplish some of these, but I would still need to have some ballpark figure as to how much this may cost us, you know, overall. Otherwise, if we, it's going to be something not reachable, right? Then we may need to take a different approach.
We do know that in order to get us to the market average, the cost is approximately $91 million.
That I know, but we're looking at some of those graphs.
So some of the other graphs, obviously, when we talked about the pay plans being sustainable, we do have to ensure that as incremental steps, the cost is going to be over time. There's one-time cost to get our scales up to where we are, and then there'll be cost over time depending on the progression of those steps and the level of that increase in those steps. So we will cost it to say, how much will it cost to bring our scales up to where we want to be? And then going forward, depending on the step progression, the increase, the cost will be different. That's where we want the plan to be sustainable. Did that?
I hear you, I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Janie.
Okay. Thank you very much. You've given us a great deal to think about, and I will actually answer the first question, and then I will have other comments. My preference would be at starting and ending salary to be at market. Mid-career, I would love to see us ultimately be towards the top of the market, and I certainly am thinking of either B or C, some combination of those two. Big-picture issues that I am looking at, and not just in being able to attract and then keep really good folks, it's clearly the ability to be able to pay one's bills to stay here, and that means achieving, where the steps, where they exactly, where they achieve higher pay much more rapidly earlier in their career. Also very aware of the debt load, that younger people are coming into the profession, and by increasing cash in your pocket in that 5 to 15-year is critical, and paying off that debt load. A lot of our people don't start paying off the debt until they have finished graduate school, most of our people are coming in with masters, and then if you are taking more courses, since we no longer pay for a lot of that reimbursement, just the debt is crushing. And then when they have their own families, et cetera, et cetera. So it's critical that we increase cash in that 5 to 15-year. I am pleased to hear the answer to Mr. Moon's question about people coming into the system, because again, we want to be able to attract people from other systems, also career switchers, we need to pay attention to that, so that we are attractive, and that will be people more mid-career. And then sustainability over time is something to be concerned about. I know we're going to talk later on stipends for teacher leadership, et cetera, because I'm beginning to hear about that. We have tried heroically to do that in the past, those are the hardest pieces to hang on to, but I'm assuming that when we talk about sustainability, when we recalibrate our salary scales, we need to be able to hang on to them five, 10 years, correct? I mean, in terms of, is it, once you recalibrate them, you work to try to get them to where you want them to be, and it's very hard to come back in and change them again. A lot of it just depends on how much money you've got. So it's sort of like we get a bite at the apple in changing the curve now. So reflecting real market need is important right now. And again, sustainability, so I think some of the questions that Mr. Moon asked are important.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
I do believe that the comment that you made is probably why many school systems have emphasized, you know, have a higher slope in the first 15 years. You know, the research literature is pretty strong on the fact that there's a certain point in a teacher's career where, you know, first of all, we're investing a lot in them in their first five years. So you want to keep them, right? Beyond that five years, and that's, I think, where it's hurting us, because after five years, you know, the market, we just don't have, we're not as competitive. But clearly, others have said, man, if we're going to invest in them in their first five years, we do all this training, we want to keep them to at least 15 years, where teachers tend to be, our teachers clearly are above average. But, you know, they start to plateau with regard to expertise and effectiveness. That's the research, we're clearly, we defy the research here in Fairfax. But there is some research that says that people start to kind of plateau with regard to expertise at those levels. But where we can keep them beyond the first three to five years where we're investing in their train, that's probably what you're hearing from principals as well, I think that would behoove us.
Right. So I...
We, I just, I'm trying to ask Ms. Strauss, do you have questions? Because we've kind of moved a little bit to philosophy. I'm trying to keep us to questions first, so that they inform philosophy conversations.
No, that's okay. I am, Mr. Moon's question, everybody else's questions so far are important, but I wanted to lay out, I went simpler between B and C, front load, those first years, and that's sustainable. So I guess, right, and so then my question is going to be the sustainability, and that question was already asked. What is it going to cost us over time? How are we going to get there? But that's my belief and my questions.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
Thank you. So the compensation part of the survey is finished. We've got all the information from the teachers on the compensation part. Did I hear that right?
The focus group is still going on. Focus group sessions will be completed this week? At the end of this week?
Okay. So we've just about closed that part of the conversation with teachers, okay?
The marks marketing analysis.
And market analysis has been done. Good, okay. I only ask that because I think it's important that we can tell the community that we feel confident that we're on track to begin this work for FY 2017. So maybe you could speak to that a little bit. Do we feel like we're on track? Okay, all right, fine, then we'll get there. Thank you. On Slide 11, and I think this question's already been answered, but I just wanted to double-check. Slide 11, where you look at kind of all the possible options, right, all on one slide, concepts, it all looks like it gets us above the market average, right? So I'm assuming that that means this is not our goal for the first year, this is our long-term goal, and we're only making an investment in this?
Well, yes, it is a long-term goal overall, and these again are just concepts or examples for the board to consider.
Okay, but we don't anticipate that we could reach this point in the first year, right? No, several years.
We have said, and we've set the stage for at least a year, that this will take, this is a multi-year strategy.
Okay, good. I just think it's important. I just wanted to double down, because I think the community needs to know that there is no way we get to there this year, this is long-term plan. And I would say, in general, that, you know, the salary versus total compensation, I know that we've kind of, we've split that out, and I understand that they are two different conversations, just for our thinking and analysis. But I think also, from my conversations with teachers and from what you have turned up, it seems like teachers are most concerned with that paycheck. You know, what is, because that's in my own conversations, what's coming home every month, especially teachers in the first half, you know, the early years of their career. So I personally, I think it makes sense for us to put some priority there in our conversation. So, thank you, that's it.
Okay. As we go to Ms. Huff, who I saw an H and I skipped over, I'm sorry. Even HO comes before HY. I just want to give us a time check, we're at 50 minutes in, which is 1/3 of our allotted time. I just want people to pace. So I have Ms. Huff, and then Ms. McLaughlin, and then Mr. Press.
Thank you. So one question I have is, over the different slopes, $91 million, no matter how we cut it, there's not a cost difference to the slopes?
There is a cost difference to the slopes. $91 million takes us to market average.
So, but is the $91 million, it depends, I understand it's going to depend on when and how we spend that based on the slope, but then do the slopes cost a different amount of money?
Correct.
A buy-in to the slope. So there's going to be some buy-in to each slope to get to where we want to be. So is there a most expensive slope? Is there...
There is. Each slope's going to cost something different.
So can, I mean, it's going to be helpful to me, because let's say I feel like B and C are close in how I'm thinking, but C is a lot more expensive overall, that could help inform my decision, if they're both beneficial, and maybe they have similar pros and cons, but one's more expensive.
I think what we can do is, if you all seem to like kind of B, C, what we could do is go back and cost both of those out, and show you what it would look like, both in terms of total cost, and then maybe how we could phase it in. Because we know, we're not going to be able to put all these into motion, it'll probably take us several years to do that. So is that right, Susan? We'll cost these out based upon if the board seems to like B, C better.
That's correct, and we could cost that out more. But if you kind of look at the slopes, more progression you have earlier and continue that progression throughout is going to cost more.
So do you, is there, this is kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Moon and Ms. Corbett Sanders, in terms of philosophy and research and analysis, which of these slopes gets us... which of these slopes gets us the best hiring and retention to that 15-year mark?
I believe it would be correct to say that the ones where you emphasize the higher increases early in the career probably have the least cost for the system in total cost, right? Because you're emphasizing more increase and then you flat. And then you have teachers with more experience that aren't getting the the major increases on an annual basis. So I would guess, just to give you a kind of a guess, that concept B, concept C probably is more expensive than than B. Because you have continued kind of raises over time and people tap out.
Concept B is probably a little bit more because it's a steady increase of 4.5% for a much longer period of time.
Okay, so so B would probably be the more expensive? Okay.
But from our attention standpoint, they give us the same benefit.
And I I don't know that we can say if we do this, retention goes up or down. I can just tell you what our employees say matter to them. And clearly, they're saying what makes a difference to them is to have more increases early in the in career. And it must be working for the other surrounding systems because most of them have that real steep slope line.
Okay. And then my last question has to do with how we talk about this in conjunction with the overall compensation. So I understand that at this point, we're discussing a philosophy on slope. But when I did go back and I looked at our slope for salary versus compensation, our slope changes a little bit to more of an S curve when we look at compensation. So when we pick one of these philosophies on as a certain slope, now then in April, we're going to talk about compensation. That's going to then again change the slope. So I'm a little bit confused myself on how to pick a slope philosophy without the compensation, basically slope conversation. Because in conjunction, overall, we're going to be changing the slope. Is that correct?
That's correct. So I just want to reiterate, these three slopes aren't the only slopes that are available. It's, it was just to give you all some examples on how these slopes can look. So we go back to the draft stated goals. And if you kind of look at where do we want our beginning teacher salaries to be? Where do we want our mid-career teacher salaries to be? And then our maximum teacher salaries? That's going to kind of define the slope. And then we work, we are going to have to model based on there have been some other ideas from the teacher focus groups that have come out with different progression even in the earlier years. So if we have some guidance on where we want to be for beginning, mid, and maximum, that will determine some of the slope steepness.
And and once we, and we'll bring these models back to you next month. And we can show you, once we kind of get some ideas about kind of preferences that we're hearing from you all, we could model it with total compensation also.
Okay, I think that would be helpful to me.
We can do both, both.
Okay.
This is important because we're designing the scale.
Yeah, yeah.
But I get your point. You want to see, does it, does that line change once we factor in total?
Correct.
Right?
Because to Ms. Hines' point, we want to listen, because I completely agree. I've heard the same thing that they care about salary now. So if our compensation doesn't change, it's going to change the end of our slope. Depending on which philosophy we pick, it'll change it more drastically or less drastically. So that would be helpful to me.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Press, and I don't have anybody else in the queue, so Ms. Evans.
I first want to thank my colleagues because many of you have been asking really important questions. And they're ones that were weighing on my mind as we looked at the information. I guess to try and point out some fresh thinking, it it did occur to me that when you look at the response rate on teachers, it was about a 54 to 58% response rate versus school administrators at 83%. And so I was wondering if there was any understanding as to why we had such a a significantly higher percentage of response with our administrators versus our teachers.
Yeah, I heard somebody over here say there's fewer. And I think that that has something to do with it. When you're surveying a smaller number of people, you're more likely to actually have a higher percentage response rate. Every additional response to the survey from a school administrator increased that percentage response rate more so than every one teacher that responded. If that makes sense.
So in terms of where their responses came out, I noticed then everything was collectively put together in the little, you know, percentage.
No, those are just teachers. Those percentage circles you saw were just teachers.
So we don't have what the administrators had to say?
We do, we do. I just, I thought that this, since we had such limited time together to talk about these models, we didn't want to talk too much about the statistics of what everyone's saying.
I think it still would have been, I I appreciate that. And I think there's value to it when you look at where the big, bigger impact is. But I think it would have been helpful to me, even, you don't have to cover it in a presentation, but I would have liked to have seen the responses of the administrators to kind of, I think, again, help the the board understand people who are on 12-year contracts versus those on 10, those are on different, you know, compensations.
Ms. McLaughlin, are you asking for the raw data of the teachers? Are you?
Well, I'm being told we do have the the data, the raw, I mean, the responses giving us the percentage responses of the teachers. I think we should have the school administrators as a comparison. Like, just one chart, just like the one you have with the teachers.
I'm just trying to define next steps. Okay.
Okay.
I can give you a qualitative answer. If you don't need any numbers at this moment, I can tell you that school administrators gave very similar results and similar responses to the teachers. That their their thoughts were very similar to the teachers. I can get you numbers.
I think numbers are important because it's not just us, it's the public. And, you know, I think people are going to want to say, thanks for the verbal, but, you know, let's have the written. The other thing that's that's weighing on my mind, and I really appreciate Ms. Huff mentioning it. And I think it's essential in the, this deliberation we're doing here, even though it's just sort of taking our temperature. And and I do want to express my appreciation, Dr. Garza, that we're having this conversation. I appreciate your wanting to bring the board along with you in in something that is significant to our school system. So this is very important. And and all of you working on this project, thank you for bringing the board along throughout. But I think the total compensation calculations are essential. You know, every time we talk only in a vacuum about salary, we have to be understanding our idealism versus our reality and making these decisions about what we will be doing from salary components, but not recognizing that as a benefits-rich school system, that you can't really divorce the two in the end. Because there's, right now, what the funding we get from the state and from the board supervisors, and we got to figure out what that pot of money is. And then how do we make this work? So I do feel that's going to be a very important part of our dialogue as a total board. I will say that this is a really good initial presentation. I feel that today is going to allow the 12 of us to at least start to have some substantive conversation with Dr. Garza and your leadership team on how we go next with this. And I I I will follow Ms. Schultz's guidance and and not speak yet to where I fall on this. But I will just share that Mr. Moon and others have talked about career switchers and, you know, how much credit we give. I think also it's so important that what we do as a system when people come from one school district to another. Careers in 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 the 21st century have changed a lot. My father, my grandparents' generations, it was not unusual that you might spend 30 years with a company, 30 years in, you know, your hometown area. But people are very mobile. And so when you have a benefits-rich system, especially one tied deeply to a pension, that's, it it worked really well then. But I think that as we start having this conversation to my colleagues and we go to Ms. Schultz's request as that part two of our conversation, I hope everybody is really mindful of not just the input we've gotten. And Ms. Hines spoke to that. You know, Ms. Huff spoke to that. Teachers are talking about what does my paycheck look like? How do I pay my bills? And, you know, shout out to Steve Greenberg and FCFT, who provided all of us board members with an opportunity to roundtable discussion this. I was, it was profound what I heard from the teachers about how they're trying to pay their bills. So I know that'll be a big part of our conversation next. Gosh, there's so much more to be talking about this, but I'll I'll wait, Ms. Schultz.
Okay, that gives us a good idea, keeps us on target. Mr. Press, Ms. Evans, Ms. Palczek.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Really appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. A couple of questions. One of the most powerful slides, I think, was slide five here, where we're discussing the results of the employee's survey. When I am trying to form my philosophy about compensation, and I imagine it's the same for many people around this table, I am, I have a deep interest in knowing what the teachers had to say. So my first question would really be, you know, and I want to, I want to second the comments of Ms. McLaughlin, that that having access to, you know, the survey data would would be something that could really inform the discussion going forward. And I I hope that, you know, probably my question, the best way to phrase that was, was there anything that really stood out to you all on that survey that was overwhelming support? I see the 63% statistic here saying that teachers are very interested in reaching the top step. But I understand that the survey was very broad, very strategic. So what takeaways can we lean from that about teachers' ideal approach to the the way that we should, you know, change that compensation? Because I think that will really change, you know, form the the perspectives of of many people around this table. My second question is really about the way that the focus groups are going to be structured and and report back to to us. Are we going to be taking down, you know, that information? And really, how are we going to be reporting that back to the board? And my third question is really about our career switchers. And I think the board members who have who have talked about that because one of the biggest focuses now in our schools is becoming career and technical education. And some of our most most effective CTE teachers are career switchers who have come out of related industries and come into our schools and teach that that subject area. So I I'm very interested in seeing how we are competitive there. And if, you know, capping it at a certain step where where people from other industries come in and say, you know, if it were, for example, step 13, how that's going to compare to other places who are pulling in people from from other industries.
Okay, Ms. Evans, and then Ms. Palczek.
Thank you very much. I think that this has moved us a lot forward with where we need to be in 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 considering our compensation structure. First, a simple question. These are the, we're dealing now in this presentation with the steps. Are you also going to be looking at the lanes at some point, as you will? So that you'll bring that to us another time? Okay. With the, I see that the the teachers also strongly supported a differential for things like critical needs, critical areas, high-need schools. Are you going to separately bring us a proposal on that? Okay, and when when will we be seeing that?
We're scheduled in April to bring back all the the more detailed findings from our teacher survey, specific to differentiated compensation. We consciously pulled that out today because we thought we would never get beyond this presentation. So we're trying to chunk a lot of this work. So in April, we'll go into, hopefully, we'll have some of these models kind of ready for you to look at.
Okay.
We'll be talking in more depth around differentiation and what that could look like. And then you also have an ERFC presentation that day as well. So just kind of those continued pieces in April will have a bearing on this continued conversation.
Okay. That's great, because I certainly am interested in in seeing our conclusions on on differentiation. And then my last question actually is looking at the different, I guess, if we go back to to the slide we were on before, not sure if that's the slide I need, if it's 11. I think we, well, were we on, yeah, I, that one. When you look at the current, the FCPS current scale, which clearly is much lower than we would like it to be, I would be interested in knowing what that looked like if we raised that by 3%. As, is the answer to that question on slide 11? I'm not sure if it is or not, but is that the answer to my question there? If, it's not, okay. Because we we are going to be considering how to deal with pay raises this year.
We're going to talk about that at the end of this specific presentation.
Okay.
But you see, this is a design challenge. See how our slope is?
Oh, yeah.
You know, so it's a, it's a design challenge. And that's what we're trying to kind of get a sense from the board is, how do you want that to look? We can model it in different ways. But is there a preference on the board with how we change that slope? Because clearly, that's part of our problem is the way our slope works.
Right, and and I agree with that completely. And I guess we're not supposed to be saying where we're going with it, but I, we do need to change the slope, whether it's B or C, I guess.
And doing a flat across the board does not change the slope.
Right, I I do understand that. But when we're, when we're looking at the step plus one, plus what we're going to do with the 40 million, I would be interested in seeing if we converted the step plus one to 3%, how much closer we would get, how much of that gap we would be filling in. You see what I'm saying? We wouldn't change the gap? Well, other systems could raise too, but but that's always going to be the case, right? Then then the gap widens if.
We're going to talk about options because we're working on fiscal year 17. And we're also changing the complete design of our compensation.
Two different things, right?
Exactly, but they intersect and overlap, don't they?
Exactly.
In complex ways. So we're going to talk at the end of this presentation about what we see maybe are the potential options available to the board with regard to fiscal year 17's budget.
Right.
The cross-the-board base increase and the teacher 40 million.
Right, okay.
And so maybe I think we'll answer your question here just shortly.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you so much. I I really appreciated the the level of detail on this. It was quite instructive.
Okay, Ms. Palczek.
Thank you. I only have a couple of additional questions. The first one being, I've heard from a few people that, you know, eight to nine years ago, it was working. So do we, for them, do we have a sense of what our pay scales looked like? What our graph looked like in 2006? And we've added some steps.
I'm trying to remember the fiscal year that we added some additional funding into our teacher scale. I'm looking over there as if Kristin remembers.
I believe it was approximately 2006. The Board of Supervisors helped us address our beginning teacher salaries to get them to the top of the marketplace. So twice, we did an infusion, once for our bachelor-level teachers and once for the master-level teachers, to add an influence of $8 million in each of those cases to the beginning of the salary scale. I I would say, with the exception of adding that money which compressed the initial steps because we didn't spread the 8 million throughout the scale, we put it at the beginning of the scales to increase those salaries. With that exception, I would say our slope has looked relatively similar for an extended period of time.
However, we weren't as behind the market as we are now. And I think that's changes the conversation a lot for for folks. Because just in the last five to six years, we've shown you all how many times steps were frozen or our employees got no increases. You've seen that a million times. So you do that year after year, you know, we start to, we start to lag. And so that's probably another, another reason that people feel like it was more competitive because we really were.
It was just that beginning that really has changed the compression.
So when you increase the beginning, you're going to create that sad because we weren't able to increase all the other steps proportionally.
Okay, thank you. Another question, I know we're looking at the MA graph here. Are we considering redoing some of our PhD? The, that's, that was the other question, right? Okay.
The reason we look at masters, because over 78, 75 to 78% of our teachers are on this scale. So it gives you, you know, instead of looking at all of them, it really gives you the best picture of where most of our teachers are.
Perfect. And then the other one is slightly unrelated, but just while Chase is here, I want to make sure we do look again at our practices for recruiting and retaining our initial teachers, you know, looking at great beginnings, what works, what might not work. We used to have Fairfax Teaching Fellows, that's no.
We used to have Fairfax Teaching Fellows, that's no longer there, was that effective mentorship apprenticeship program? So just want to make sure, especially remember going through the first years of teaching, are we looking at things beyond the pay scale that are either supporting or not, or doing the reverse for our beginning teachers?
Sure, most definitely, that's something that we continue to do, we know the compensation piece is a, is a large, large part of that conversation for our new teachers, and also both recruitment and retention, but as you said, there's other pieces of that as well, and so we don't lose sight of that, and we'll continue to look at those practices too.
Thank you.
Okay, before I go, I just want to check to see if there's anybody else who had a question? Okay, so I do have a couple of questions, on slide five, there is the paid differentiation, the 83% based on school environment versus paid differentiation based on critical needs, how is that defined in the survey? How is that in and of itself differentiated?
Want an answer now? Okay, okay. The critical fields or hard-to-fill positions, the definition in the survey said financial incentives or higher pay for those working in hard-to-fill subjects or disciplines, such as secondary math, science, and special education.
So critical fields was the content area, if it was hard to fill a position in a content area. School environment was the environment of the school, if a school had high needs overall.
Okay, so it could be hard to fill a position because of school environment, but that wasn't the critical needs definition.
That's correct.
So the correlation in this slide, the issue I've got is I don't necessarily, and maybe that's the conversation that you've alluded to is coming, Dr. Garza, the correlation doesn't appear from this slide to slide 10 to be apparent, it's just the same slope, you know, it's just a slope change, and conceptually a slope change, where the previous slide, slide five, really shows what the teachers are asking for, and I don't understand necessarily the correlation between what the teachers are asking for, which is the basis of the survey, to this, which is just a slope change.
I think it, right, I think it speaks to a couple of different pieces, and we talked about compensation, because the other thing that I moved away from and I shouldn't have was on slide five about the teachers favoring a quicker progression up the salary schedule, that does kind of comport to what we're talking about on slide 10 and through on, the differentiated pay, as Dr. Garza talked about earlier, it's related, but it's a little bit different. You can't, and that's coming later, because those have to be add-ons or stipends that are enhancements to the salary schedule, and so it's looking at building what our base salary schedule is, which we're doing today, that progression, and then looking as, okay, what are those additional pieces to help address some of those critical needs, fields, or hard-to-fill positions?
Okay, so this is like, this is, really it's the top half of the slide is the driver for this part one of a multi-part step, okay?
Right, and we didn't, we wanted to provide that information not to cloud today's conversation, but to let, give you a better sense of what the teachers are telling us and what we're trying to respond to, so we wanted to make sure we shared that information.
Okay, if we can go to slide 15, please? And I forget who brought this up, maybe Ms. Evans or Ms. Huff, I guess I have the same question, which is, what would motivate a teacher at step 21 to stay? If their retirement is driven off their pay scale at the end of their career, and typically, you know, there's, for the hangers-oners, you know, there's still opportunity at the end of, I mean, we're saying for the last roughly 10 years of your career, we get nothing. So I just, conceptually, I'm not asking for, you know, a detail, but, you know, to look at a absolutely flat plateau for the last third of a teacher's career concerns me. So.
And I think that's the kind of feedback we need from the board, because certainly it's prioritizing how you want this designed. I would tell you that for those that are on that flat part, they would get market scale adjustments, so assuming that the board, you know, approved a 1% or whatever market scale adjustment, they would get those, they just would not get a step if that's the design.
Okay, that's helpful. I too have the same concern expressed by Ms. Corbett Sanders about the size of competitors one and two, I do think it's actually relevant, because I do think that the concept of the compatibility of our school system to be able to compete with a very, very small school system that has a completely different funding base does become relevant, and so I think we may have to take a consensus around, you know, getting some information on that.
I think that's just the point of reference, and that's why they're comparator, not competitor on the charts, it really was to give you a point of reference where those slopes are and where those school districts are.
So that leads me to the next question, which is, I almost feel like what we're being asked is, if you were to start from scratch, if you were building a school system right now, looking at the lay of the land, what is the slope that you would build absent, you know, I mean, there's always what we're doing now, but the difficult thing about change is being the change agent, so, you know, entering into the fray is the hard part. And so are you, I mean, am I correctly characterizing that really, regardless of slopes or whatever, if you were, if there was nothing there, if we were to draw a slope, what would that slope look like? What would that ideally look like? Is that fair?
I think it is, and it's one of the options, we've kind of concentrated on that third option that we laid out, but one of the options was, we keep the slope as it is, or we just do changes to the, or increase the percentages across the board, which is also an option, and so, yes, that's fair if we were to go option three, that we want to look at redesigning the slope, asking for the ideal.
Okay, and so then to piggyback on, I think, the question that Ms. Huff and Ms. McLaughlin were asking, if, can we go to slide 10? The differentiation here then would be, I think, and this is the question that really, I think everybody's talking around, but we haven't gotten to, the difference in applying a philosophy outcome to this discussion could be that you may like C the most, but it will take you longer to achieve C. You might get to B more quickly, and you could definitely get to A more quickly in achieving that slope, but if C is the ideal, then we're in what I would call name your pain, are you willing to get to the ideal slope if it takes you longer to ultimately get to the goal, like, you know, do it right the first time, kind of thing? As opposed to be incrementalizing and getting relief faster, but not necessarily winding up where you really would ideally wind up? So could it be that because of the cost, that we don't know, and I do think that that's somewhat problematic, I think we're somewhat prematurely having a conversation, absent dollar, I mean, we're being asked to make a philosophical business decision for the division, absent talk of any money, which is, in my opinion, never a good thing, but if we're talking philosophically, we're not making, you know, a true decision at this point, I think what I'm seeing is make the ideal suggestion at this point, but be aware that if your ideal suggestion is more costly, it could take us longer to achieve that ideal, and that there's the trade-off in any decision that the board's going to come to, is that, is that fair?
I think it's, I think it's a great way to put it, and I think we also have to be mindful that school systems tend to not do this kind of work every 10 or 15 years. So, you know, that's why we have to spend time really getting this right, I think that's what you were saying, Ms. Schultz, because whatever we do, it will likely, maybe with some tweaks here and there, but likely be the direction the system stays for the next 10 to 15 years.
So I just wanted to couch that, okay, a couple of go-backs, I'd like, I'd like us to be finished with this part and go into the final presentation by 11:40, so if you could be mindful of that, and then that has us using two-thirds of our time with one-third left for the balance. So Ms. Huff and then Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Okay, thank you, I do think this is a great conversation. One other, next step, is I'm assuming you would be able to let us know what the market average slope is, what we would need to do to get on the market average slope, there's probably no exact, and I see that concept C gets us there more in terms of that slope, but it looks like from what we're doing compared to market average, that maybe we would do 1% change up to step five, does that make sense?
How much it would cost us to get to the market average?
From a slope perspective, not a dollar perspective, right? Because, so the concept C is we're showing it, it's a 5% change up to step five?
Do you want to know what the progression of the market average slope is?
I know there's no exacts, but.
Right.
We're jumping way above that, so what is market average?
Sure, what are those, is it 4.5 at each, or?
Correct.
We should be able to get that.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Actually have two questions, one would be, if you take a look at our teacher pool, if you could chunk it into how many teachers are in that one to five year, what percentage of our teachers are in the five to 10, 10 to 15, and beyond years? So we know, you know, when you're, when you're looking at where the step increases are, or the proposals, what is the real impact? You know, are we, you know, if, for example, only 10% of our teachers are in one through five, and 50% of our teachers are in 15 to 20, and we're, you know, so basically a scatter gory of where our teachers' population is, that would be helpful in understanding what the impact of these are, and then secondly.
Let me just, we have to be mindful of, we could give you where our current population is, but that doesn't always mean that's the same population we'll have going forward.
I understand that, Susan, but we as educators probably have an optimum in our minds as to what is the best distribution of talent in a, in our workforce. So do we want to have a compensation program that really keeps people from years one through five? Do we want to have a compensation program that keeps people up to that 15-year mastery level, and then after that, we're less concerned, you know, our compensation design will have an impact on our retention of employees? And so what is the objective as far as air, if we could design the perfect school system, what would be the distribution of expertise and experiences? And then building on that, when you look at the curves for compensation, one of the things that came out early on was a willingness and an expectation that we would compensate certain expertises more, and we would also have a differentiated compensation based on the school environment. The school environment compensation is probably an add-on, but the expertise compensation is a fixed, if somebody is a science teacher or a special ed teacher, then that's what they're hired in to do, and so that would be a different curve. So given that we opened our school year with shortages in those areas, do we need to do something to front-load the scales for those categories of teachers earlier on?
You'd still have to treat any kind of differentiation, like your example was maybe high school science teacher, right? The scale would have to apply to every high school teacher, every middle school teacher, elementary school teacher, the same, because, and then if you want to add money on top because that person happens to be a high school science teacher, you have to add it on top, because at some point, right, because at some point that person may say, you know, I don't want to teach high school science anymore, I want to teach elementary science. Do we still want them to get that differentiation? Maybe that's no longer one of our critical shortage areas, so that's why next month when we talk about differentiation, we'll have to talk about, anything we differentiate, we probably want to put on top of, that way if their assignment changes, they don't automatically have that salary moving forward.
Or potentially in a completely different scale. Okay, okay, are you, are you finished? Okay, Ms. Strauss?
Okay, I wanted to pick up where Karen left off. What we're doing now is we're looking at the future, what is, what is our, what is our future workforce, what are we looking at, it's really millennials in the workplace, and trying to create a scale that is going to attract the people that we need over the next 10 to 15 years, because you can't afford to do this very often. So we are looking at attracting the 22 to 45-year-olds, and it really is five to 15 years is obviously where we know we're soft, and it is that where we need to, we need to strengthen where we are, so it's really a future look and the sustainability over time, but all of the research on millennials in the workplace shows exactly this, where the weakness is and where we need to go. So I know in, in, in looking at sort of age bands of where we are now, that that's a very short-term look, it's, it's where we know we need to go, and in the teaching profession, you have some folks that hang on as old as me, most people don't, so you're looking at very often that in your twenties into your thirties, and maybe you're into your mid to middle forties is where you're going to want to make sure you've got top of the peak, robust wherever you're going, whereas in other professions, they may look at keeping people into their sixties, as educators, that it's great if we can keep them, you have Mr. McElveen's dead, but that's an outlier, so it is that five to 15-year, sort of the age span where we really need to be strong for the next 10 to 15 years.
Well, that, just clarifying, that's your opinion, we just, we've got to make sure we take.
No, that's fine, that's my opinion, but I'm basing it on national research, on where we're seeing with this age group, and also the reality of what we tend to look like in the education profession.
So I would suggest, based on that, that when we talk about our draft stated goals, then that should be one, our goal should be the attract, attracting and retaining teachers through this level, and then that will drive the conversation as to compensation.
Okay, we're going to get there, we're going to get there, Mr. Moon?
I just wanted to be a little helpful to my colleague sitting on my right, is based upon the responses provided to the board, our work session December 7th, there's some information on where our teachers are, and from step one to step five, about a third of our teachers are from step one to step five, step six through step 13, which is the maximum credit we give, is another third, so the rest, the remaining third are from step 14 and above, roughly.
Yeah, I'm just curious now, so before we move on to the next part of this, have we gotten a sense of the board yet on A, B, or C? Are we going to do that before we move on?
No, no, we're going to, no, there's only two more slides, so we're going to have them finished, and then we're going to have the conversation so that it's a whole approach. I have, I have just, myself, I just have a couple of go-backs. The respondents who replied, do we know the distribution of the response, and I think that may have gotten, okay, so I think Mr. Moon, and his first question was a little bit getting to that of, who responded? Do we, do we have a plethora of, in the 50 whatever percent who responded, are they mostly step one to five, you know, what is the distribution? And so I would, I would ask, I'm going to. would ask, I'm gonna, I'm putting that down.
Trying to figure out the built-in prejudice or bias.
I'm not asking for an answer now, but I think it should be a next step. Um, two, do we have the same for attrition? So when we're losing teachers, and maybe this gets a little bit to what Ms. Corbett Sanders was asking, um, it, it's, it's the decision of where to put the dollars, and it's a little bit of a compendium of all of the questions thus far. Do you put the dollars, i, i, if, if it's most important, as, um, as Ms. Strauss was indicating, if she says we've got to hold on between years five and six and 15, is that really where our overwhelming attrition is? Because I don't know where the attrition is right now. And so correlating, what's the attrition? When, when does it, it's very, very costly to front-load the training of a teacher for the first five years, and then for them to punch out. But is our attrition rate very high at three to five years, frankly, when our pay scale is relatively comparable, you know?
I think someone did ask that, a comparable question, and I wrote it down as a next step, and that is turnover rate by step on scale, and we'll see what we can, I think that's what you're, I think that's also what you're asking, right, Ms. Schultz?
Two of us are on the same.
So I, I caught that in my list here, and we'll see what we can.
And, and this is, this is a next step consideration for the differentiation conversation that we're going to have, which is, um, do we want to talk about a differentiated scale for second career teachers? Like, do, not necessarily bringing them in at the same, not at the same point, but just have a separate scale. If you're a second career, if you're coming to us after a different career, there's a, just a different pay scale. Um, and it's something I think that we should consider and talk about, rather than trying to insert a second career individual who has a different set of background and skills into what is really a professional career ladder for a professional educator. I, I sometimes think we're trying to fit, you know, a, a square peg into a round hole. So, it, it's a thought. Okay, so can we, can we, before we have a discussion, um, there's only a couple more slides. Can you all do the last part of the presentation, and then we'll go into, um, kind of, we'll, we'll wade into where we are as a board and try and build some consensus?
Sure. The, um, second part of the presentation is just one slide. And this is really starting our conversation on where we want to head with 2017 compensation. And we broke it out into two parts. The first with our current step and 1% in the advertised budget, and then the initial teacher salary scale investment of $40 million. So those are two different compensation categories that we need some guidance from the board as we move forward. So step and 1%, the total value is $62.2 million, and there are two options. The first option is applying the step as we would normally do with our current practice, meaning that wherever step you're on, if we grant a step, you'll get that incremental increase. And that ranges from 0% for those folks that are on longevity, to 4.25%, depending on where you are within the salary scale. Okay? And then when you add that 1% of market scale adjustment, currently, the employees would see a range anywhere from 1% to 5.25%. That is how we would currently apply step and 1% to our current scales.
Okay, this is important, but you almost have to separate, this conversation we're having today is helping us bridge these two worlds that we're kind of dealing with, right? This design, as Ms. Schultz, I think, kind of pointed out, right? Designing the future of our pay scale, but also realizing that we've got to start modeling decisions that we're needing to make in the near future.
That's precisely why I wanted to do this slide, the second part, before we get to consensus building, because you're basically talking consensus building and immediately beginning on the journey. So we can't begin on a journey towards what we built on consensus, and then take a left turn and veer right off the path with what we're going to do with compensation in this budget. So you, you've got to start to marry and meld those, those two.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, but I want to interject here if you don't mind, Susan. The step and the 1% market scale adjustment, and keep in mind, this assumes that all of this is funded exactly the way it is in the budget. Okay? We have to have that as an assumption so that we can start to make some decisions about how we would model this, uh, moving forward. So the step in the 1% market scale adjustment is what's currently in the budget is kind of the base increase for everyone. Um, there's two different ways we can do that, assuming it's funded, is distribute the money exactly the way people are accustomed to getting it. They, our employees out there, understand step and 1% market scale adjustment. They understand the current model, they, they're accustomed to that being the way that they've often gotten raises, if they, if and when they've gotten raises over these previous, I don't know how many years, but it's something they're very, they understand. If we wanted to convert those dollars to a market scale adjustment to move all of our scales up, and some of you have brought that up, um, I get that, but it does change how our employees understand. It's a very different way. We just have to know that. And it also changes the amount that people get. Because the only way you can do that is to equate it then to a 3% market scale adjustment, and that's the second bulleted item under there. So what that would mean then is for some people, depending upon where they were in the step, they may have been projected to get a 4%. Okay? If you're at longevity, you may, you know, at the end of your career, you're maybe only going to get the 1% market scale adjustment. But if we do it across the board, I'm gonna go from a 1% now to a 3%. Okay? So I think our choices are, assuming it's funded, for this year, do we go ahead and give everyone that step and market scale adjustment under the current reality, under the current world? Okay? The step and the 1% is, is they're accustomed to getting it. And then keep working on our scales, on the redesign, and have that be in play for fiscal year 18 and beyond. Okay? And that, I, I believe, actually, that is my recommendation to you, because I think if we start moving all of these scales, it will be very, very hard for our employees to understand. Um, and we just need a lot of time to help educate them about what it, the implications would be. So I think something that we're trying to do that's good for our employees, I think if we can, assuming you all, you know, certainly, you're the ones that make the decision, but I think it would be easier to communicate with our employees if we keep whatever, I'm talking about just the first one, the step in the market scale, assuming it's fully funded, that we distribute it under our current design, and continue to move forward on those other designs for the future, fiscal year 18 and beyond.
Okay, so this is where we're going to start talking about philosophy from the first part of where we want this thing to go, and start to try to build consensus. And we are exactly on time. We have one third of the conversation left.
Ms. Schultz, may I finish the last part, because I think it, it would also have a bearing.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be real quick. The second part, also assuming it's funded, the $40 million, I think could be done differently. Okay? We could, because this is on top of an across-the-board increase, what we could on the second piece is use the 40 million, you could certainly apply it across evenly all scales, the two point, it would equate to 2.9%. And it would move the scale up. But keep in mind, it'd move every piece of the scale up the same. I'm not sure that that's what the board wants to do. We're going to recommend with the extra 40 million, assuming it's there, that we go ahead and begin to model, assuming you support this, that we would target more money, the 40 million, more money where we're farther from the market, and then graduate it out. Meaning, on that second 40 million, not every teacher would get the same amount, but the teachers that are, like in the middle of their career, like 10, 15, where we're far, we start to move that up. That decision also situates us in a better place moving forward in the designs for our years. So Chase and Susan, did I miss anything on that conversation before? I know Ms. Schultz is ready to kind of open it up.
I think you've covered it well.
Okay.
So, um, knowing that there's some information to still come forward, which is attrition, which I do think is important, because with what Iljaung said, if, if a third are between one and five, a third are between six and 14, and a third are 14 and beyond, if the attrition isn't primarily in six to 14, that's, that's the part that I'm concerned about. That's the only part that I'm concerned about, is if we aren't seeing the attrition in six to four, 14, and we put the money at six to 14, then we're putting the money where there is an attrition. You know, if we're losing the teachers in the one to five, in that first third, then, then the question is, do we need to front-load and do, and look towards a different slope change? And so that's the only difficulty with having the discussion we're about to have, and having it context.
And let me say one more thing. On, on this, assuming we get direction from you all on these two pieces, then we will model that and bring it back to you next month. So let's say, y'all said, agree with you, Karen, let's do the step and 1% under current scale. We don't have to model anything there. But we would, depending upon how you want to use any additional money, whether that's 40 million or whatever it might be, how do you want us to show that? We can, we can start modeling that for you all to look at. Does that make sense?
Okay, so I have, um, the lineup is Janie, Iljaung, Ben, Sandy, Pat.
Okay, my advocacy is the step plus 1%. If we went to, and across the board, converted that all to 3%, we are at, the biggest advantage goes to the people who are on longevity steps, and they don't need the advantage. They are already invested. They are looking at their pensions that they've, uh, invested in. They're not leaving. Um, also, if we advantage the very top of the scale, we run the risk of, um, throwing off our, our salary lapse, um, turnover rate. And that can have a devastating impact on what we project for, uh, 2017. When we ran the deficit in that year, some years ago, that was where we had advantaged, um, the people at the end of their teaching career, and we ran an $18 million deficit, starting in October of that year. So, um, where we need to advantage is with our younger teachers, uh, in their earlier years, the mid-years, and I think by doing the step plus 1%, um, then sort of the average, um, uh, increase is then a little over 3%. It's more like 3.5%, depending on where you are in the scale. But it tends to be the younger employees, and that's where I feel we need to change the, the, uh, the salary scale, so that I think the 1% plus step puts us in a better place for beginning to address, um, the change in the scale. And then with the teacher salary scale investment, absolutely. I, I, my advocacy is to put those dollars again into changing the curve and advant, and advantaging, um, the places where I believe we are, um, most at risk of losing our people.
Okay, Iljaung?
So, it's my advocacy.
I basically agree with what Janie has said, that we should not be changing our conversation on step plus market scale adjustment at this point, because that's been the assumption all along. That's, was in your proposed budget, in our advertised budget, and I would hate to change that to something else at this point for top part. Bottom part, as we go into, as supervisors deliberate on, on their decision on the amount of transfer to us, it is critical for us to give them as much advance, as much information as possible from where, where the board stands, to use, how to stand on this 40 million dollars, that we do, we do really expect them to fully fund us, so that we can have a right pay scale, where need, where it's needed. And at this point, based upon the presentation earlier this morning, that I am somewhere between B and C, somewhere around there. That's where we need to make a more investment. And I do really want to see, when you come back, hopefully sooner before, I know that we have a scheduling problem with this, you know, before, uh, you know, supervisors, because their markup is prior to our next April work session, correct?
Yes.
And so I, 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 you know, we may have to schedule another work session if that's when you're going to be bringing in, because supervisors will need to know how the school board is intending on, at least, they, at this point, well, at that point in time, because we cannot even wait until their markup time, because they gotta start thinking about, you, you know, gotta give a due consideration of what really, how they want to fund us. Because, so, uh, so maybe, you know, between, you know, B and C, I, I do really want to see how you want to put 40 million dollars to effectuate that.
Okay. Um, Janie, can I go back to you for just a second?
Sure.
You, you only gave the step plus one. Are you, are you also B and C?
Yes, yes, somewhere between B and C, as to how that best places us in the market, where we know we are, we are weak.
Okay, we're all loud talkers with these microphones, so let's keep them, yeah, let's keep them back a little bit. Okay, Ms.?
That's with larger, largest market gap. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, I agree with Mr. Moon.
Okay, Mr. Press, then Ms. Evans?
Thank you very much. Um, I'm not going to rehash all the points that were made, but I agree with, with that plan that Ms. Ms. Strauss and Mr. Moon laid out. Um, so I'm going to weave some, some math terms in here. So I'm going to ask you all to pair with me. My math teacher's going to be real proud of me for doing this. Um, when I'm looking at this, um, slide 10, I think what's really interesting is the market average, is what that's trying to do. And what I see that is trying to do, especially with the skew that we're providing it, given our sagging pay scale between year six and 15, is that we're almost looking at a logarithmic model, where you're starting with a high increase in the early years, with a, with a gradual decrease in percentage increase, uh, as we progress towards, uh, towards longevity. And I think that if we were to take FCPS out of that mix, that graph would even, would look even more so like that. So with that said, that would be the ideal model that I personally would be in favor of, you know, just, just by virtue of what the market is trying to do, we, I think the logarithmic model is going to make us most, most competitive. Um, so I would probably say that in, in my preference, in my estimation, C is going to be the most effective in doing that. Um, I have concerns about the plateau that both B and C reach in the later years. Um, I think A to a lesser degree, um, because, you know, at the end of the day, pay is an incentive for teachers to stay with us and keep educating in our schools. When we talk about the vision for what a pay scale is going to do, what I see is a pay scale that should reduce attrition, should keep teachers here, increase retention, a, and attract the best people. We are not attractive, as we've discussed, between six and 15, uh, and then we start to become more competitive in those later years. But at, you know, during that time, most teachers have already established their careers and are not looking to move. So, uh, I have concerns about us disincentivizing our veteran teachers, you know, in, in Model B after year 15, and in, in Concept C after year 21, from staying here. They, they have plateaued, they're, they're not, you know, at that point, uh, you know, there may, there might be a perception that, oh, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to, going to invest in you above and beyond the, the incremental market scale adjustment. So I have concerns about that. I think the logarithmic model, though, you know, at the end of the day, it still does increase, although at a smaller margin each time. Um, but I think it provides those veteran teachers with a reason to stay here. Um, so to sum it all up, I think a logarithmic model would be the most effective, and I think Concept C comes closer to that. I would just say, I think we could do some tweaking there to provide increases in later years, perhaps by reducing it, uh, you know, 14 through 21, to allow for, for more incremental increases as we go on later.
Okay, Ms. Evans, then Ms. Heinz?
I'm going to answer the second question first. I support targeting the steps to the, um, closing the gap where the market is, certainly. If we look at this, I'm, uh, gravitating to see as, as well, particularly with the understanding that that is less expensive to, to get to, to that finally. Um, I would like to see those numbers, though, um, what, what B is like versus C. And, and also the, the attrition numbers, I agree with Mrs. Schultz, that that's, that's significant, you know, where, where we really need to be doing this. Um, with, in regard to the, the first question, this is where I really would have liked to have seen what happens to that green line with a step plus one versus a 3%, because I think that, 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 um, I hear what Janie and Iljaung are saying, um, and Dr. Garza, you know, I hear what, what you're saying about, um, who would get the, the biggest increases if we did the 3%. And that is significant. That's a significant factor to keep in mind. At the same time, we're talking about spending $62 million on a scale that, that we seem to think is not the best scale. So that gives me some pause. So that gives me some pause, to be putting it into a scale that we think is not the right scale. So, I am kind of withholding judgment on, and I realize you want guidance today, but I'm withholding judgment personally on the step plus one versus the 3%, even though I do hear what you're saying about the people getting more, and we want to be putting the money into where the gap is. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if there shouldn't be a third option. I know. To try to think about how we might put more of that into the scale adjustment, as opposed to, I'm just, I'm wondering if more of it couldn't go into part two. But I just throw that out there, because I do think that we need to start as soon as possible on readjusting.
I think we have, yeah, I think we have to keep in mind, when we talk about step increases, it's individuals' progression within the salary lane. So when we don't provide the step, they don't move from that step. Market scale adjustment just moves the scale up.
I understand, and that's what I'm saying. The step doesn't move that green line at all, right?
But to individuals, it helps them progress.
I do, I get that, right, and so, so you're saying it can keep teachers, even if the line doesn't go up, there's certain teachers that it can keep, because the line isn't showing us where individual teachers are. Okay, I get that, I get that. And if our goal is keeping teachers, our goal is keeping teachers not moving the lineup. But still, I do wonder about possibly putting more money into the, readjusting the scale, because that ultimately is what we want to do.
So, the value of step increases is the forty million of the sixty-two.
And that's where I'm wondering if we might want to be readjusting that. But it's a little difficult at this point, I get that.
I think it's difficult, and it's also because we would be doing then a partial step, and it just gets hard to explain to our employees.
I understand.
But I understand what you were saying. No, 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 what Ms. Evans was talking about, shifting money from step to increased market scale, so we go from like a 1% market scale to 2%, we have pulled some of the money from the step, and then we'd only get a partial step.
Or if we put more into the, into the forty million piece of it, if we put more into that part of it to closing the gaps where we think we needed to close the gaps.
Ms. Evans, you're basically suggesting a hybrid between the two. And I do want to, I do want to make clear for Ms. Strauss and Mr. Moon who have spoken, that when you say you want the forty to go to the larger gaps, the forty isn't available if you take the first option, which is the step plus 1%, because the step is the forty.
The forty is additional forty.
You're assuming, you're assuming we get the additional forty. Okay, well, that's right, we're assuming, we're assuming.
We have to, in order for us to be able to model.
That's fine, that's a level, that's a level discussion, that's fine.
And I would just ask one other question about the targeted money. Does that assume that any of that would go into the differentiated pay, or is it completely not at all? Okay, that's a whole different thing. All right, thank you.
I think anything we do with regard to differentiated compensation, we'll have to look into the out-years, because it's not reflected currently in our budget, so.
So, you're still basically suggesting a little bit of a hybrid. Is it, okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, Ms. Hines and Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Okay, on the second question, I'll start with that. I think I'm with most people that the B/C concept is where I am. And I think, I'm not wedded necessarily to either one, because I think that figuring it out is going to, you know, be challenging, going to have to probably look at benefits as a way to make some of that work, you know what I mean? I mean, when I think of total competition, maybe I'm wrong, but I think we can use benefits to help us create the salary scale. That's, no, okay, never mind, forget I said that. Anyway, but I still, I think there are a lot, all I'm saying is there are a lot of details that go into figuring out what that slope would actually be. But in concept, to move the scale up so that we're more competitive in places where we're not, is where I am. So, and the other, on the question of, you know, the step plus one or the 3%, I think, if I'm not mistaken, if we do go with the idea of the B or C, doing a market scale adjustment all the way across is counterproductive, because I think what it does is it exacerbates the problem that we have, where we'd be putting money at the top and the end of the scale, which is actually what we don't want to do as we move forward. So, I think it works against what we'd be trying to do. And then thirdly, and lastly, I think it's very important that we start now in fiscal year 2017, which means that we need to make sure we get this funding from the board of supervisors. So, I hear what Mr. Moon is saying. There, I think they're signaling that they're a little bit concerned about writing this check for the forty million until we have some clarity around our plan. On the other hand, you know, this simply takes time. And I think we're already at a point where, you know, we've heard from the teachers, we have direction from the school board. It's really only a matter of putting together models that we can look at. I mean, so as chair, I would say, if the board is willing, and if the superintendent is willing and ready, we could, we could schedule another work session just to talk about those models if we need to. The forty million, yeah, what we would do with that, with a little more clarity. Because I agree, I think the board of supervisors should have as much clarity as we can possibly come up with before they make their decision.
I'm sorry, so you're on the step plus 1%?
Yes, ma'am.
And the forty, and the forty going to the larger gaps?
Yes.
Okay, Karen, then Megan.
Clarification, the step plus 1% at sixty-two point two goes across the whole employee base, not just teachers, correct? And so, I guess one of my questions is, when we looked at the earlier compensation studies, not all of the scales are out of whack, you know, to the same level. And, you know, so my question is, when we do a step plus 1% across the board, are we actually going significantly outside of the market scale at some point in some of our categories?
No.
And.
Let me answer that part real quick. All we're suggesting on this is that, assuming we, all this is funded, that we would use our current model to distribute the money, okay? It doesn't mean that down the road, the board will still have, be wrestling with, how do we balance the budget? And you could say, we don't want to do the 1%. All we're suggesting is, assuming that you all want to keep this the same, step plus one, that that would be under our current schedules, okay? It doesn't take away your opportunity to change some of these decisions down the road. You're just, all we're suggesting is, what configuration do you want to do it?
And if I could add one more, just to, hopefully I could provide some clarity. Step increases doesn't mean you're either overpaying or underpaying an individual. It's your way to progress through that salary lane. So, you made a comment earlier saying, with some of our other positions, we are closer to market for the scale. But that's different from an individual's getting step increases and moving, progressing through that scale. So somebody with ten years of experience, or somebody with fifteen years of experience, they are going to get paid different amounts within that salary scale.
Right, I understand that.
So, the step.
Is a 2.5% increase across.
But that doesn't impact, that doesn't impact the competitiveness of that salary lane. It's just individuals' way of progressing.
Well, it would impact competitiveness, because it's.
No, it doesn't, not for step. So let me see if I can try that one more time. Competitiveness is when the entire scale moves up or down based on market scale adjustment, solely based on market scale adjustment.
But the competitiveness of an individual's package is based on where they are, what their take-home salary plus compensation is.
And that was not evaluated through the market study, not individuals' competitiveness, the scales' competitiveness.
Okay, so, I guess my, I have a couple of questions along that line. We have, obviously, we're going to have some tough conversations with the board of supervisors over the next couple of months. And so, I would just urge that as we have those discussions, we actually have a bit more of a plan on how this money impacts, because that will, I think, help us in those conversations. And along those lines, we know that the governor's budget has called for a 2% increase in salaries for all teachers. Pardon me? Okay, so that's, so what we're talking about is above that, and we should then look at what's the differential on that, just so that we can have an informed conversation. And along those lines also, as far as competitiveness in the non-teacher scales, I guess my question would be, how do we compare with similar jobs in the county? And, yeah, I saw that. And so I guess, you know, that's where we are kind of competitive. And the county is suggesting a 1.33% market rate adjustment. So all of a sudden, does that put us out of, out of the market range with them?
The study that was done, that we shared with you all for the other positions, that included Fairfax County Government, that was done on this year's, the current fiscal year salaries. Any decisions they make, or any decisions surrounding systems make, that could change a lot of the analysis for the out-year. So, we had to take a point in time, so it could affect. They have a different salary model. Their current budget, unless they've changed something over the last couple of days or so, their current budget has the same, on average, increase for their employees as ours does. Ours, on average, is a 3.3%, theirs is on average a 3.3%.
Let's get back to Ms. Corbett Sanders, what are you advocating for this?
Teacher salaries, then are we better off, and I'm just throwing this out, are we better off with a step for non-teachers, and then taking that 1% and putting it into teacher salaries?
You're basically advocating what Ms. Evans was advocating a little bit, which is a little bit of a hybrid.
Right.
A little bit of a hybrid, okay. Ms. McLaughlin.
So, it's actually good timing that I'm coming behind these questions, because I've actually had this conversation with several supervisors, and I want my colleagues to understand my position on this. I do not support changing this FY17 proposed employee compensation increase in any way different from what the supervisors are promising all of their employees, and here's why. In the past, the board of supervisors have done a wonderful job making sure that our police, our fire and safety, are constantly being evaluated against the market in the region. And when they've needed to adjust the salaries to make sure they are market competitive, they find the money, and they do it. Because we are not a funding authority, we've not been able to have that luxury and that ability to do something that's so important. So, when some of the supervisors said to me, well, if you're so committed to your teachers, then why aren't you taking your money that you want for your annual compensation increase and redirect it just to deal with your teacher and your market rate competitiveness? I said, did you tell your county employees, the year you did that, there would be no raises for everybody else, because you're going to take care of police and fire and their competitive salaries? I said, we're dealing with two different problems here. One is that we've been in a recession, our employees as a whole have had their wages stagnating, and we need to address that for our employees as a whole. And then you've got a second problem, which is you have a county that collectively, supervisors and the school system, have not been as committed to our teachers as we needed to with police and fire.
I understand the marketing concept between us and the board of supervisors, but I need to get to what you're advocating for here. And it sounds to me like you're advocating for step plus 1%.
Yes, but I think it's important for people to understand the rationale, because if not, then you will have supervisors saying in public, do you not support and understand where to direct, I apologize, how to prioritize your funding? I've been listening to individual supervisors in front of microphones and televisions accusing this school board of not knowing how to prioritize and spend their money. And I don't think that today's conversation, we want to leave that question unanswered or ambiguous. We know how to prioritize our funding, and we need to encourage them to have just as much ownership that this county as a whole, not the school board in a vacuum, has a responsibility to make sure our teachers' salaries are competitive within the region. So yes, Ms. Schultz, I know, I'm pontificating, but I'm trying to help our superintendent, and our colleagues, and the public, and anybody who's listening, do not let this conversation suddenly become, we have to make sacrificial choices. This county as a whole owns this commitment to.
A, B, or C, or a combination thereof.
Okay, so first of all, to the step plus 1%, Dr. Garza, you mentioned 3.3. I remain wedded to that for as long as the county's funding that for their employees. If they cut back on theirs, we have to have a conversation with you and with the board as we look at what funding we're getting. So I wanted everybody to understand that. I think we have to be fair and equitable with raises, whatever that's going to be by the time they fund each other and they fund us. So, Ms. Schultz, to the bigger question on C, B and C, I would like to tell my colleagues that from even my own personal experience as a daughter of a teacher, as well as what I heard the teachers in the roundtable conversation, it is extremely difficult for teachers when they are thirteen, fourteen years into their career, and they are not hitting their peak stride in their earnings ability. I was an eighth grader when my.
B.
No, no, Ms. Schultz, sorry. Everybody else has had a chance to talk, so I'm going to talk. And I am telling you, I am going for B, because making people wait until year twenty-two, you are going to lose teachers who have children heading into college, and they cannot pay their bills, and they cannot put their kids through college, and so they're going to end up saying, I got to leave the profession. It happened in my own family, and I heard teachers talking about that in my roundtable discussion.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Dernak Kofax.
But Ms. Schultz, you didn't let me say the most important part. We have to be able to know what all this costs. So I can like B, but back to Dr. Garza.
You have an A, Ben, from at least over here, we got it.
Okay, and then the last question, the first question you're being asked is, assuming we can fund the step plus 1%, can we do it on our current scales? You're also asking about future scales, kind of what curve you like or prefer. And the third is, do we target the forty million to the largest market gap?
And she said no, she'd prefer the 3.3.
No, 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 Dr. Garza is correct. I want 3.3 on the step plus 1%, but to the lower one, if we get any money of any kind in the forty million for the compensation gap, then we should be targeting those where the largest gap exists for now.
Ms. Dernak Kofax.
Ms. McLaughlin, I appreciate your points.
Very much. Particularly the analogy about our teachers versus police and fire, because I hear that a lot. And it's not, it's not fair. And it's not fair when board of supervisors members stand up and say that in front of PTAs, and say, we don't have a plan for our forty million, to let this be perfectly clear at this point in time, that we aren't making our plan, we are having a discussion and a conversation.
I will be succinct, Ms. Schultz. I support the step plus one. I think we should target to the steps to the largest market gap. And I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin's points. Again, my problem with C is exactly as she talked about, plateauing at those levels in your career at that point in time. So, people say between B and C, I guess, I guess I'm there too, between B and C, but I am very concerned about the plateaus and at what point they come in people's careers. And that's why if we could work out some kind of, other kind.
And that's why if we could work out some kind of, other kind of, that's why I might be leaning toward B, only because it's consistent, it's throughout. I too had the privilege of sitting down with some teachers' groups this week, weekend to hear in focus groups. And they, it was concerning to hear the struggles that they have. And so, I'm very, but they, I did specifically ask about the market gap, and they talked about going it across the broader, where the gap currently exists. And they talked about what struggles they have early on. I happen to have a group that was...
Ms. Darnett Kofax, before you go, I want to make sure that we're clarifying, because you're talking about being worried about the plateau. The plateau is actually in B. C is the one that is the continuous model up, and Ms. McLaughlin said the same thing. So, I want to be very sure.
I said B, because I want them to hit their career mark earlier. I wasn't saying anything about C, Ms. Schultz. I understand the graph very well.
So, you're okay with the plateau, but Ms. Darnett Kofax is not saying that. So, she was trying to agree with you, and you were too, not on the same page.
Well, I was saying I was concerned about the 3% plateau for, you know, steps 11 through '21. That's what I was concerned about. And I'm looking at the graph, and I'm seeing what you're saying there. I'm seeing B plateaus slightly less, you end up less. But I think, even though graphically it looks that way, I, I'm still concerned about the 3% through those many, many steps. And that's the plateau I'm speaking of specifically, but I see what you're saying by this graph. B actually, C, you see...
Okay. So, you're on the...
So, I guess I'm between B and C.
You're between B and C, you're on a step plus 1%, and you're at the 40 to the larger gaps. Okay. Moving on.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask another question that obviously can't be answered today, but it, I've heard a lot of information thrown around, and I don't know the actual facts, but I do wonder, is, if we're at 1/3, 1/3 and 1/3, in terms of factually research-based, what do we want to be at? Do we want half or 3/4 of our teachers to be from 1 to 14? We want 1/4 from 15 on? Is there a more ideal mix that we'd want besides 1/3, 1/3, and 1/3? And so, when I say I don't know the facts, that's what I'm... In terms of what we want. And then, how does that inform where those slopes get us to that, to that ratio of teacher years? So, I'm leaning between B and C with some more information on what the market average is actually at in terms of their actual percentages for those steps. And then, to Mr. Press's point, I do think that it's important to remember that when we get to those later years, a lot of their incentives come in the form of pension. And so, that's why, when you see that plateau towards the end, their incentives haven't stopped, they're incentivized by something different. So, I think, oh, and then, my answers, okay. Step plus 1, but I would be curious to hear some more information to Ms. Evans' question about what a hybrid would look like if we separated teachers out of the rest of the employees. And then, $40 million cover that gap better? And last question is, oh, B, C, or...
Okay. I have some people left who have not spoken besides Ms. Palchek and myself. Does anybody else want to vote? No. Okay. So, Ms. Palchek, do you have anything you want to contribute?
Thank you. No, my vote would be just following the discussions this weekend, and thank you to Mr. Greenberg for organizing it. Did ask teachers and the step plus 1. For people anywhere along the scale, they seem to favor that, so I do think that's the best option for this year. And for models B and C, my only question is, one versus the other, does that affect our pension costs, retirement costs? It looks like C is a little higher, so is it just nominal?
Very nominal, depending on where the ending salary is and when people retire. If we could assume that people are retiring after 29, 30 years of service, because their pension is based on last five years of their salary, assuming that's the high five. So, depending on where we end the scale is what's going to drive the pension benefits.
Okay. So, I, I do like the logarithmic model that Mr. Press mentioned, but if there are other things that we haven't looked at, does it really affect, you know, is 15 to 20 affected in a way that we don't, we haven't foreseen the attrition or retention in that areas or something I haven't thought about that would say B would work better than C? I'd love to see that. But barring that, C does seem to be a stronger model comparing it to the market average.
And then, you're in the 40 to the larger gaps?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Absent anybody else speaking, one, we're looking at employee scales that are based on, and I appreciate the statistic, that 78% of the teachers have masters, but this is a model for all of our employees. And that's the problem I have, is that all the support employees are made up in addition to this. And so, we're making the same decision, we're being informed by 78% of the fact, 78% of our educator base has masters, but we're talking about a scale that's going to apply to 100%. So, I still...
No, that's, sorry, the, for the A, B, or C? Or the...
No, yeah, yeah, for this.
This is just for the teacher scales. This is not the unified or the administrator's.
Perfect. That's why, that's why we asked the questions. The biggest question for me remains, where is the attrition? If we are talking about putting the $40 million in year 6 to 14, because that's where the biggest gap is, but that isn't where we're treading, and Ms. Huff, I think, asked actually a brilliant question, which is, you know, if we're looking at creating, what is the ideal slope on pay scale? The question too fits in, what's the ideal makeup of employees across that? And if we need more younger teachers and fewer experienced teachers, and then, you know, some kind of a distribution across the middle, do, does that change our thinking about where we apply that money? And that you apply and become more competitive at the front end and have a softer logarithmic bend to what you're evaluating? And that's the part that's missing, and maybe I'm a little bit where Ms. Palchek and Ms. Evans are, in that, you know, a journey of 1,000 steps, 1,000 miles begins with one step. If we don't change anything now, if we harden into the step plus 1%, we're a little bit falling back into the model of, well, when are we going to change? And a little bit of kicking the can down the road. So, I'm more in favor of a hybrid that looks at beginning the process of migrating to a different pay scale, a different slope, to be informed by that attrition, and to be informed by what does look like an ideal composite of our employees. Is it good to have a third of our employee base, which are very expensive, at the experienced end? You know, at 14 years plus, that's, that's a heavy investment to have a third of your employees at the top ends of the pay scales going forward. And does that look better to have, you know, 20% there? I don't, I don't know, but I think that that would be insightful to look at in terms of, if we're building an ideal slope, let's have it be ideal. If 50% of the attrition is at years 3 to 5, that's a totally different thing than if 50% of the attrition is at years 10 to 14. So...
I do also think we could look at the attrition rate that we have currently, and we'll try to pull that information. But if you are in your fourth and 50-year teaching, and you know when you get to step 6 or 7, and that you are going to see a significant increase, that may also change that person's behavior, knowing where the salary scale is going. So, I do think the current attrition rate is important, but I don't think that alone should drive what the scale looks like.
I agree, I agree. So, I'm on a hybrid, and I'm on a 40% to the larger groups, but only informed by the attrition. Because I do think it's important to incentivize the teachers to stay where we need them to stay, not just by years of a gap on a slide. Our particular needs are more important to me than a model. But I think, and I haven't heard from a couple of our colleagues, but it looks to me like we're, the consensus is step plus 1%, even though some of us aren't there. The 40 to the larger groups hopefully maybe being informed, and coming back to us on the differentiated presentation in April with something that is a little bit more, something around the B and C, more disaggregated, if you will. Is that about right? Does anybody have any problem with me inferring that consensus? Mr. Moon?
The only thing is about scheduling of the next work session for that presentation. I understand that, but I'm sure you have a presentation to the supervisor scheduled for April 5th. You probably, we probably want to have that discussion prior to that presentation so that you can present that.
Yes.
Yeah. We have our, our next hold work session is actually later this week, so that will be too soon. We'll have to do, put in another one. Yes. And I think in general, you know, the message from today, if I could, at least from our board, is the message to our teachers is, stay with us. We get it. We're committed to beginning this investment now. And we do want to make sure the Board of Supervisors has as much information as we can get them, but I would hope that their message to our teachers is the same. Stay with us. We're committed to this investment.
Okay. Can we go to next steps, please? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McLaughlin, while they bring up next steps.
So, I just, I wanted to go back because I'm a little bit concerned with what message we're giving Dr. Garza. I know that we can be asking questions like, what percentage of our teachers fall into this part of where they are in their careers? And, you know, then, how do we, you know, think about where the slope is and all that? I honestly think it needs to be, what is national best practice for retaining teachers? I mean, we can't just be in a vacuum, because our employees are going to change over time and veteran status. And to what I shared earlier, I think if you're, I want our most passionate, dedicated teachers to stay in the classroom and stay with Fairfax County Public Schools, because they can make an affordable living, and they can remain in a career that they love. And so, to Ms. Schultz, I mean, I'm just offering a different point of view, that I don't feel like I need to incent them to necessarily stay to year '21. If they gave us their 15 best years, and now they're burnt out, and they're ready to move on to a different career, they can. But what we've done is, we've said, by year '15, you have hit your, your career stride. And, you know, we're going to make it so that if you want to stay in for another 15 years...
Ms. McLaughlin, I think that that's exactly what this board has just said, but I also think that being informed by the attrition is what they heard, and also being informed, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Huff, and I all made the point that what does the, what is the ideal makeup? Ideal makeup, to me, is best practice. So, I think if the question that they come back in April is, what is, what does an organization our size look like in terms of the distribution of experience to new teachers? That is, by definition, I think, best practice. Ms. Palchek?
Well, best practice would be something outside of the bubble of FCPS.
I have a quick question for you, and maybe an impossible one. We're talking about attrition. One of the main concerns I heard from principals as well was the ability to recruit. Is it possible to see where along the, the scale that we're having issues with recruitment, losing people to other districts?
Okay. So, here we have some next steps. What is turnover rate by step on scale? I think if, if we could change that to attrition, I think everybody understands attrition a little bit better than turnover. I have on mine, the raw data on responses. Do we have that? If I could clarify, it's not raw data, because I don't know that you want each and every
response from every single individual school administrator. That, we promised some anonymity here, so if we could...
When, when this board, when this board says raw data, it means total number of respondents, the year in which they were. It doesn't actually mean the individual responses. So, yes, Ms. Evans?
I had also asked to see what would happen to the green line with it being a step plus 1 versus a 3%. Oh, is it the last one? Oh, that wasn't showing up. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Didn't see it.
On the provide data for school administrator survey responses, it's, it's all the responses. So, it was, you know, it's just the makeup raw data of the respondents, not just school There was a question I had noted about whether or not we're going to ask for the comparative ID...
Sorry, since that one's mine. Yes, we want data for survey responses, but we want to make sure it includes teachers separate, as well as the, the school administrators.
Disaggregated. Disaggregated works. I'm sorry. There was a question about whether or not we wanted the comparative identification of 1 and 2. Of the 1 and 2, who they are. Does that matter to the board? Are you asking for it? Is there a consensus about? On slide, the comparative districts. I forget what you called them, but... Comparitor, comparator district. That's what's used in the presentation. Are there any others? Ideal composition of the employee base. To best practice, to best practice for Ms. McLaughlin. Informed by, informed by best practice.
That was a question. I'm not certain that we can answer it, but we'll try.
That's okay. Your answer could be, we couldn't answer it.
Okay. Could be. Because it, because people, you have, you would have opinions about that, right?
Is there anything else? Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Yeah. And just in terms of the data, if you could provide, I don't know, I'd really like to see it more broken down. In terms of teachers, we had 58% response, but can you break it down by their experience level, by what region they're in, maybe by what school level they're teaching at, or what academic, academic area they're in?
I can tell you what, what we can break it down by. We asked a few questions, few, what I call demographic questions, some of which are on your list and some of which aren't. We asked them their job category, since on the, on the teacher's scale, we have not only teachers, but therapists, audiologists, librarians, guidance counselors, excuse me, school counselors. And so, we have it broken down by that kind of category. We also have years of service with the school system. Now, that's not what step they're on, nor is it how many years they've been a teacher, but it's how long have they been with FCPS? And then, we also have by age.
Do you have, do you have by high school, middle school, elementary?
No. We do for the school administrators, but not for the teachers.
I just, it would be useful if you could stratify the responses across every, every type of data you collected. That would be helpful. I'd also, and is, were there questions investigating other forms of compensation package other than salary? Did you investigate that in terms of the questionnaires?
Some questions in the survey did address benefits. Particularly, we had our first three questions of, what brought you here? Why did you first come to work here?
Why did you first come to work here? What keeps you here? And then why do you think employees leave? And in that list of options, there were certainly benefits. Um, and I'm trying to think if there were others. I, I think there, um, certainly in the focus groups, we are talking with, uh, with teachers in particular, but also other employees, um, especially around the retirement benefits and the perceived value of those. So that is something we're addressing in focus groups.
I'd love to see, like, again, as many categories as you ask questions and the stratification of those across teachers.
I think the disaggregation of the data is what we're all looking for. Ms. McLaughlin, this is your absolute last, because now I'm four minutes over my goal. All right, um, then we're approved with the next steps, and we are literally three and a half minutes over our 150 allotted minutes, which I think is pretty good considering the complexity, but I'm getting a finger from Ms. Mulberg. Yes, Ms. Mulberg?
I, I...
Oh, yeah, we don't have lunch on our agenda, and we will break for lunch. This, this work session is concluded.
We will, we'll reconvene at 1:00.